Called order, the regular meeting of the Mount Lebanon Board of School Directors. It is Monday, June 17th, 2024 at 7:40 PM. Apologize for the brief delay. We are present here in Room D205 of the Mount Lebanon High School and public participation is also available via Zoom. Before we get into the meeting, will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mrs. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Here.
Mrs. Gelman?
Here.
Mrs. Gensel?
Here.
Ms. Guth?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Wyland?
Here.
All members, correct.
I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the minutes of the discussion meeting held on May 13th, 2024, and the regular meeting held on May 20th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. We are moving now into Board Reports. First up on the agenda is the Board President's Report. The Mount Lebanon School Board instituted the Extra Mile Award to recognize district staff members who demonstrate exceptional service to our students while exhibiting behavior that encourages others to follow their lead. This evening, it is my pleasure to welcome and recognize Mr. Ralph Bregel for the Extra Mile Award. As for the timing of showing up after the end of the school year, you'll have to thank your nominators for the timing. Rolf is an environmental geoscience teacher at the high school, but one label is not enough to describe him. He does much, much more to help our community of learners in our district. He is everywhere making a positive impact. His nominators sent us the following non-exhaustive list of some of the ways that Mr. Bregel is involved. Organizing the SAT and PSAT exams, organizing volunteers to usher for graduation ceremony, working with colleagues to produce the morning announcements for the high school, conducting drivers' education training and licensing for students, chaperoning dances, including prom, managing all announcements shown on the high school cafeteria monitors throughout the day, volunteering to be part of the instructional cabinet representing the Science Department, sponsoring the chess club, working to organize Veterans Day recognitions, as he is also a veteran of the Navy, and ensuring that our school honors the military and armed forces in our nation through special activities, all while finding time to serve on the school board of a neighboring district. It's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Bregel and present him with the Extra Mile Award. A few highlights from the district's inclusivity calendar. June is LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. This month was established to recognize the impact that gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender individuals have had on the world. LGBTQ+ groups organize month-long celebrations, including pride parades, picnics, parties, memorials for those lost to hate crimes and HIV/AIDS, and other group gatherings. The last Sunday in June is Gay Pride Day. Mount Lebanon's local annual pride celebration, Lebo Pride, took place on Saturday, June 15th, and speakers during the opening ceremony included me and Dr. Fries. Congratulations to the organizers of a successful event. On June 19th, we celebrate the federal holiday of Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Emancipation Day. This holiday commemorates the day in 1865 when slaves in Texas and Louisiana finally heard that they were free, two months after the Civil War. June 19th therefore became the day of emancipation for thousands of formerly enslaved African-Americans. Mount Lebanon's local annual Juneteenth celebration took place on Sunday, June 9th. Congratulations to the organizers on a successful and joyful celebration. To share some district highlights, on Thursday, June 6th, the district celebrated the 443 members of the graduating class of 2024. Congratulations to our students for their hard work, dedication, and perseverance. On behalf of the Mount Lebanon Board of School Directors, best of luck in all of your future endeavors. Mount Lebanon students participated in the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science competition. Three Mount Lebanon High School Science Club students placed in the competition, including Katie Ding, first place, computer science category, Lila Polat, second place, physics category, and Lucian Mickish, first place, mathematics. Melon 7th grader Eli Lasis earned a first place and a perfect score for his project on the digestion of different forms of sugar. Eli also won the 2024 Directors Award for Excellence in Microbiology. JMS 8th grader Annalise Meyer also won first place in chemistry for her project titled Rates of Absorption for Common Material. JMS sisters Claire Rath and Elena Rath each earned a second place for their projects. Congratulations to the Mount Lebanon School District Boys and Girls Lacrosse Teams for both capturing the Whipple title. And we wish all of our students, families, faculty, and staff a happy and restorative summer. The Board will not meet in July, but we look forward to seeing everyone in August. Finally, tonight, we welcome Britta Berickman from the Pennsylvania School Board Association to present a certificate of participation to Claire Guth. In April, Ms. Guth visited Germany with members of the PSBA. This certificate recognizes Ms. Guth's dedication to education.
Just to clarify, no Mount Lebanon tax dollars for stuff.
Well, I would like to just take a moment to describe briefly. An inaugural year, so those who joined us had no idea what they were signing up for. So really, an adventurous group of educational leaders willing to learn from other educational systems, and it was a very rigorous meet across four different cities. We held 15 meetings with all levels of government, educational systems, teacher preparation, university, CTCs, corporations, and brought back a lot of good learning that's going to be shared across the state and nationally over the coming months. So thank you for your participation.
That's great.
And some mementos that weren't a little bit of explanation. There are bottles, but it is water. Still, unfortunately, they were at every meeting and small cookie biscuits because it was a week full of water and biscuits.
Sounds like my kind of week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Guth. That concludes my report. She said water. Moving on, we have the Superintendent Report.
Thank you so much. As Mrs. Fleischer shared, on June 6th, we did have graduation, but prior to graduation, we held an event for our seniors called the Senior Send-Off. We had approximately 400 seniors and their families participate. On Monday, June 3rd, they were able to go back to their elementary schools where it all started to kind of celebrate with the staff that supported them, as well as our students, who will be in their seats in the next couple of years. It was a beautiful event. It was a lot of fun to see students and staff so happy just to kind of reunite before they move on to their next chapter. Commencement was on June 6th. We celebrated 443 graduates. It was a beautiful night. I think we had four drops of rain, which we probably needed because it was a little bit warm, but it definitely held off and gave us a very beautiful night, and there's just a couple of pictures from that. I think the tossing of the caps is always a lot of fun. Lebo United Summer Work. As many of you know, we established a working group for our DEI Task Force called Lebo United, and over the summer, we'll be completing some work on two different goals that we worked on this year. The first one is a professional development goal to develop a comprehensive and professional development plan for all staff to support equity and inclusion. Lebo United, in collaboration with the District PD Committee, is creating assured experiences for professional learning for staff related to DEI for the 24, 25 school year and beyond. And then the second goal that we'll be continuing and finishing up this summer is ensuring all stakeholders feel safe, supported, and included as valued members of the school community. The first component of that goal is an onboarding process for new families. One of the pieces of feedback that we receive from staff as well as families is that they would like to see a more welcoming process for onboarding new families. So we are working on building a welcome and overview of the school district, a building for communication channels, curriculum and academic programs, extracurricular offerings, support services, and technology use. And we are collaborating on this initiative with the International Families Group at Mount Lebanon Library in orienting our families to our community. Because we are more than a school district, we are a community, and we want to make sure that we are welcoming families in every way possible. Today was a pretty special day for Mount Lebanon. As many of you may know, Mount Lebanon High School swimmer Sylvia Roy was competing in the Olympic Trials this week. Earlier today, she won her heat in the 100-meter backstroke and finished 20th overall. In addition to that, Sylvia qualified to swim in the 200-meter backstroke prelims on Thursday between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM. Those trials are covered on Paramount, but it's like a subscription service. So we did watch it today because one of our central office employees has a subscription, so we got a little sneak peek. And as you can see, this is a screenshot from her phone. She was repping Lebo, which we always appreciate. So we are really excited for her. Keep her in your thoughts as she competes. I think the Olympics is a pretty fantastic way to end out this school year.
And she finished much higher than her seed. So.
She was fast. I can only float. I wish I could swim, but I can't. I swim to survive, not swim to compete. And then finally, schools out for summer. Classes for 24, 25 will begin on Tuesday, August 20th, and kindergartners will come back on Thursday, August 22nd. We hope that all of our families and students and staff have a very relaxing summer, and we look forward to seeing you back here in about two months. And that's my report for this month.
I don't know if we can top that cuteness with our Board Reports, but we'll try, right? So Board Member Reports. Policy Committee, please, Ms. Guth.
Of course. We met earlier this evening to talk about crosswalking policies and converting our current policy format to the PSBA format. And this is a really good opportunity. There's an extensive amount of policies that PSBA will filter down to school districts, and a lot of them are ones that we, you know, even though we're a very wonderful functioning school district, are ones that we aren't currently subscribed to. So it's a really great opportunity to kind of de-risk and, you know, go with like the state standards. So we'll discuss this more in August and then start transitioning a lot of the policies based on the number, numerical categories, starting with like the Level 0 Board programs.
I just want to thank Ms. Guth and the Committee and Dr. Fries and her team for their work on this. When Ms. Guth assumed the Chairwomanship, we met and set out some goals for this first chunk of her term on the Policy Committee, and one of them was to make this, I guess, to examine the potential transition to the PSBA Policy Services. It works very well with the Board Doc system. It provides additional transparency on our policies to the community and to the Board in terms of what is happening federally and statewide and with the vast majority of other districts in Pennsylvania regarding sound school policy. And I think we identified a couple of particular policies, like their data governance and their equity policies, that were not ones currently in our stable. And I'm excited for the work, and it will be a lot of work. The public should get ready to hear a lot about numbered policies over the coming school year, but I'm very thankful that it's underway. Next, PSBA and Board Development. Mrs. Gelman.
Thank you. The Pennsylvania House of Representatives has recently passed a bill to help address school funding, thanks to the efforts of Dan Miller. A seven-year plan to enhance public school funding has been approved alongside discussions of this year's state budget. School directors across the Commonwealth are encouraged to engage with PSBA's Action Alerts to advocate for their schools and ensure that their voices are heard during the critical phase of decision-making. Earlier this evening, I sent all of our Board Directors the Action Alert links so they can advocate.
Thank you. Mount Lebanon Foundation for Education, Mrs. Gensel?
Sure. I don't think, last month, I know I asked Dr. Davis for the number of grants, and I don't think I shared which ones they were. So I'm sorry if this is repetitive, but wanted to share that we awarded four grants this spring. The first one was called Women in STEM Outreach. That was for $370.42. There was a second one, Lebo Proud Ribbon Installation, which will be happening in, I believe, the hallway below Center Court. That was $520.22. The third one was Micro Loans for Entrepreneurship and Student Businesses, and that was for $650. And then the larger one was for Biography Buddies Family Reading Project, and that was for $3,000. So we were excited to award all of those and look forward to more teachers applying next year. And that's all.
Mrs. Crable, the Municipal Liaison Report.
Sure. So the Activate Uptown with all of the art installation is still moving. So they are early in the process. So currently, they're drafting the calendar. However, they have been in contact with our Fine Arts Chair, and they are really excited to be a part of the project. But they did receive a grant to acquire LED projecting lights for like a lighting installation project, and Washington may be a part of that. So we're very excited to hear that. And there'll also be some more information coming up soon when it comes to Uptown Schools and some of the things that they plan to work and integrate with school districts. So really excited to see where this goes once we come back in August.
Thank you. Parkway West, Ms. Johnson?
Hello. So Parkway, we had our last meeting of the school year, June 4th until September. We had a report from the AHN Chill Room Program Therapy Providers, which is a really interesting program that they're using at Parkway for students to provide a calm and safe space for students to talk to a provider and help calm them down through the day, because it is nice that at Parkway, they have at least three hours with one teacher, so their teachers get to know them really well and can see if there's a significant issue happening with them, and they can send them to go and get help either in the morning or the afternoon. And the top five reasons for visiting the provider is stress, peer conflict, overstimulation, family, and anxiety. And the last 15 minutes of the day is offered to the educators. So if they need to go and talk to someone for 15 minutes at the end of the day, they're able to do that. And Parkway said it's been a really helpful resource for the students and faculty to use. It was a really great report and presentation that they gave to us.
Pathfinder School, Mrs. Burdick?
Yes. The Pathfinder School Year came to a close with several festive events in the last couple of weeks, including a neon light-up party event, a talent show, a pierogi party, and of course, the celebration of graduates' accomplishments. The final meeting of the academic year will occur tomorrow. On the agenda is approval of the operating budget for the 24, 25 school year, celebrating graduates again, and a review of the capital project of installing new HVAC and some roof repairs. And hopefully, we will be meeting the new principal to take the helm of the ship in the summer, as well as a new facilities manager, who's been identified.
Thank you. Shazda has not met, so I have no report. Mr. Hoffman, the Community Engagement Liaison?
Yeah, the Civic Engagement Board, or CEB, meets on the first Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM at the Municipal Building, and public participation is encouraged. I serve as a non-voting member. Our last meeting was on Wednesday, June 5th. Mount Lebanon Police Chief Jason Haberman joined to share an update on the Police Department. The department is adding a Social Services Community Outreach Coordinator to enhance the mental health and crisis support that is available to the community. This new position will help the Police Department respond to the calls that require this special skill set while allowing officers to focus on other needs. Other topics discussed include general police engagement, mediations, DEI, community survey, Residence Academy, and the Community Service Award. The next meeting will be held on Wednesday, July 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Anne Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Crable?
Nothing to report.
Excellent. All right. So moving on, comments from residents or taxpayers concerning action items for this meeting. Nobody has previously requested to speak, but if there are any who want to offer comment for any of the myriad items on this evening's agenda, now is the time to do so. Anyone online? No? Okay. The next, there is no unfinished business for Board Consideration or Action, so we're moving on to New Business for Board Consideration and Action. All matters of new business were considered and discussed by the Board at the June 10th Discussion Meeting, except as noted by an asterisk. The first agenda item. Please, Mrs. Gelman.
I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the appointment of Patricia Connolly to the position of Director of Operations for a five-year term with a start date to be determined, subject to the remaining conditions of the agreement at an annual salary of $155,000.
Second. Any discussion? All right. Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Ms. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right. We do have Ms. Connolly here tonight. If you want to say a few words of welcome, we're excited to have you onboard.
Thank you for approving me and hiring me tonight. I will do everything I can and work very hard for the students and for the community, and I can't wait to get started working with this wonderful team and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Agenda Item B, please, Mrs. Burdick.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I move that it be resolved that the Board approves Hosack, Speck, Metzl, and Wood as the financial auditors at their quoted price of $35,000 for fiscal year 2024, $35,950 for fiscal year 2025, and $37,000 for fiscal year 2026, subject to approval of final engagement letter by a Superintendent and Solicitor.
Discussion? I just want to note, both of these first two items were new. We did have the opportunity to meet with Mrs. Connolly in executive session last Monday, as well as to interview a member of the proposed audit firm. Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Excellent. Agenda Item C, please, Ms. Johnson?
I move that it be resolved that the Board appoints Patricia Connolly as School District Treasurer for the 2024, 2025 school year at no remuneration.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item D, please, Mr. Wyland?
I move that it be resolved that the Board approves, ratifies, and accepts the following financial reports. Treasurer's Report dated May 31st, 2024, list of bills dated May 22nd, 2024 through May 31st, 2024, and June 5th, 2024 through June 12th, 2024. List of tax refunds for May 2024, list of unusable equipment dated June 1st, 2024, June 30th, list of bills, budgetary transfers to close the school, or to close the 2023, 2024 fiscal year, and list of donations to the schools for the 2023, 2024 school year.
Second.
All right. I think we do have some discussion of the projected expenditures and revenue that were not completed as of last Monday.
Thank you for the opportunity to explain the report that was provided and also explain that this type of report takes a little more analysis to meet the deadlines. We will be able to give you this update again by the middle of July, and we believe we'll always be able to make at least for your legislative meeting, this type of report. We'll do our best to explain and try to have it be for the first meeting. Time constraints, I can't guarantee that, but I will guarantee you always have it for legislative meeting. What we're going to continue to provide you will be what you would have seen in the first block that gives you your comparison with 2023 actual year-end expenditures, then we have the adopted budget for 23, 24, and then you have a snapshot of how we're ending at the end of May of 2024. But the most important piece is, when you want to look to the right-hand block, it's giving you what we had as our 23, 24 revised projected final expenditures and revenues on May 8th, 2024. That was the document that we used as we moved forward to adopt the budget. What we're always going to be giving you is the update to show you, okay, how good are we doing? Where do we look at related to our projected final? That's the piece that takes a few more minutes to analyze and go a little bit deeper to give you the best information. You know, fortunately, within this month, you'll see in the far right-hand column, there's a considerable number of ups and downs related to the expenditures, and a few in the revenues, mostly around state revenues, we know where our final numbers are. And the best news is, at this point, we're doing about $361,000 better than we thought we were. Do I expect that to hold up? Probably not. Do I expect that we're coming very close to what we projected? Yes. So I believe there are things that, you know, would make someone lose sleep overnight, you know, with some of this, but I try my best to sleep and do a good job for you. And we'll continue to do this, and I'll still sleep well. So, you know, there are some wild cards in this, but just wanted to have the opportunity to explain.
So as far as the $300,000, the original projected deficit was about $2.5 million that you guys had whittled down to 1.1 when we passed the budget last month. So with this $300,000 adjustment right now, understanding there may be further adjustments moving forward, but right now, that takes us even further.
By $800,000.
Down to about $800,000 from 2.5 originally. Is that?
That's correct.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much for that work.
And thank you for having the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome, Pete.
And I have to tell you, this is funny. She's looking, I just love the Superintendent. So I'm talking, you know? And it's like, and I don't get to talk much to you guys, right? So like, but she's looking at me, will you shut up? And I gotta tell you, you're getting everything you paid for here. I was just like laughing in my head, and I had to explain that because this will probably be my last time seeing you guys. be my last time seeing you guys. You know, you are really very lucky to have Pat come in, you know, behind me. I think that, you know, I was very happy to be here and serve you folks, and the look from her today was just priceless. It'll be burned in my mind.
I'm like Pete's mom. Right? I do want to add, this will more than likely be Pete's last meeting, but we want to say thank you for your service. We would not have been able to get through this without you. We appreciate you very much and have loved having you as a member of our team. Hopefully, we will be your last school district, because we will be your most memorable school district, correct?
I do have to say, on the way in today, I'm talking to the next one that wants me to go. Saying, you know what, go to this one first, this one second, and I'll be third in line, please.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you very much.
I want to second the board's appreciation for Mr. Karmada taking us through this current budget cycle, as well as helping to shape up some of the operations of the business department, and I know we'll continue the good work moving forward. And I am excited to see that the projected deficit is lower, although certainly we still take any deficit seriously and, you know, have done everything we can to plan for next year to try to avoid that scenario. I think that I, we had a motion in a second. We had some discussion, other discussion. Pete threw me off my game entirely. All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item E, please, Mrs. Gensel.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves budgetary transfers for June totals $69,333.82 for utility bills, refuse removal, sewage, water, bus maintenance, floor drags and mats, elevator maintenance and repairs, bus radios, safety supplies, football uniforms, whip you lacrosse medals, paper supplies, umpires, library supplies, world language competitions, student transportation, FCS food supplies, graduation chairs, and staff development.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item F, please, Ms. Guth.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves CM Regent as the district's insurance company for property liability directors and officers' cyber and student accident coverage at the quote rate of $397,054. Chubb is the provider of cyber insurance at the bid price of $24,333. And AIG of Pittsburgh is the provider of student accident insurance at their bid price of $13,551.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item G, please, Mrs. Crable.
I move that it be resolved that as a member of the South Central Area Special Schools Jointure, the board adopts the procedure set forth in Section 1704 of the School Code permitting a mail ballot to adopt the operating budget for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item H, please, Mr. Hoffman.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the proposed 2024-2025 South Central Area Special Schools Jointure budget totaling $534,362.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Crable? Oh, yeah, roll call. Sorry. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
We made it our first of several go around. Agenda Item I, please, Mrs. Gelman.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the 2024-2025 food service budget in the amount of $2,968,618, with lunch prices set for $2.65 for elementary and $2.80 for secondary.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right, Agenda Item J, please, Mrs. Burdick.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves Turner Dairy as the district dairy supplier for the 24-25 school year at their bid price of $21,270.
Second.
Discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item K, please, Ms. Johnson.
My favorite agenda item. I move that it be resolved that the board approves Hershey's as the district's ice cream supplier for the 2024-2025 school year at their bid price of $7,732.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item L, please, Mr. Wyland.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the list of personnel changes in the form presented.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item M, please, Mrs. Gensel.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the Administrative Compensation and Performance Plan for the Mount Lebanon School District Administrators, Act 93, pursuant to the amendments to the plan and the terms and conditions as presented effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item N, please, Ms. Guth.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the 2023-2024 satisfactory performance evaluation of Dr. Ronald Davis. Under the terms of Dr. Davis's employment contract, his salary is $196,650 for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
Discussion?
I've shared throughout the course of the year just how much Dr. Davis in particular has just continued to impress and step up, so just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. There are a lot of challenges that we faced in transition, and some foreseen, some unforeseen, and certainly you were a core part of the great work and solutions that were reached this year. Thank you.
All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item O, please, Mrs. Crable.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the 2023-2024 satisfactory performance evaluation of Dr. Joseph Shulo. Under the terms of Dr. Shulo's employment contract, his salary is $175,950 for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
And we're about to move into also a raft of approvals of annual salaries per our employment agreements. I did want to just note that there are a couple of 10-month groups and others that would be also brought forward for consideration in August, so we're not skipping anyone. Agenda Item P, please, Mr. Hoffman.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the annual negotiated salary adjustments for administrators effective July 1, 2024, for a satisfactory rating.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item Q, please, Mrs. Gelman.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the annual salary adjustments for specialists effective July 1, 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3%.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Ms. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item R, please, Mrs. Burdick.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the annual salary adjustments for administrative assistants and supervisors effective July 1, 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3%.
Second. Discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda Item F, please, Ms. Johnson.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the negotiated annual contract salaries for 12-month secretaries effective July 1, 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3.9%.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item T, please, Mr. Wyland.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the annual salary adjustments for head custodians effective July 1, 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3%.
Second. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item U, please, Mrs. Gensel.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the annual salary adjustments for custodial maintenance employees as listed, effective July 1, 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3.26%.
Second. Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item V, please, Ms. Guth.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the negotiated annual contract salaries for food service employees as listed effective July 1, 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3% over the duration of the contract.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Moving on to agenda item W, please, Mrs. Crable.
So excited for this. I move that it be resolved that the board approves the 2024 list of graduates in the form presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item X, please, Mr. Hoffman.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves an agreement with Allegheny Children's Initiative, ACI, to provide student assistance program, SAP services to the district for the 2024-2025 school year. There is no cost to the district for this service.
Second. Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item Y, please, Mrs. Gelman.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves an agreement with the Tillotson School for the provision of an extended school year program for two students at a cost of $2,500 per student for a total of $5,000 for services beginning on June 17, 2024, and ending on July 18, 2024.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Ms. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item Z, please, Mrs. Burdick.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves an agreement with the Bradley Center School-Based Mental Health Program for the 2024-25 school year. These services are accessed through a family's medical insurance, and there is no cost to the district.
Second.
Discussion?
This was a great addition to the district's business. So thank you again, Dr. Freeze, Dr. Davis, all the Dr. Shulo and the team that put this into place.
So I'm excited to be able to roll it out globally this year for our students. All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
We're now leaving the generally accepted alphabet. Agenda item AA, please, Ms. Johnson.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves a contract with the Bradley School for the provision of special education services for Mount Lebanon exceptional student during the 2024-2025 school year at a cost not to exceed $39,128.40 per student. We do not anticipate sending more than four students.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item B, please, Mr. Wyland.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves an agreement with the Children's Institute for the provision of special education placement for the 2024-2025 school year. The tuition cost is $68,355 per year. The Children's Institute is an approved private school, state subsidized, non-residential. The district is responsible for 40% of the cost. Cost of the program will not exceed $27,342 for one student.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item C, please, Ms. Gensel.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves an agreement with Pittsburgh Behavioral Services Incorporated, Pittsburgh ABA, for the provision of special education services for a Mount Lebanon exceptional student for the 2024-2025 school year. The cost will not exceed $33,250.
Second. Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item D, please, Mrs. Guth.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves an agreement with the University School for the provision of special education services for Mount Lebanon exceptional students during the 2024-2025 school year. The cost will not exceed $27,500 per student, anticipated for no more than two students.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Agenda item E, please, Mrs. Crable.
I move that it be resolved that the board approves an agreement with the Watson Institute Social Center for Academic Achievement, WISCA, for the 2023-2024 school year for the provision of placement with special education student. Annual cost of the service is $57,155, which will be prorated with the start date of May 9, 2024. This contract will not exceed $7,030.
Second.
Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.